Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, November 13, 2018. Prior to the roll call and the start of tonight's meeting, I'd like to remind folks who may want to speak to the one item on the agenda tonight, which is the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan. To kindly get a speaker request form, they're in the back of the room there. Kindly bring those forward to our city clerk Lynn Fizikas. She will get those to me and we'll see that you're on the agenda. Roll call, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Markhart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Before we move on, I did receive a note earlier this afternoon from Alderman Noriko. She is going to be a tad late, but she is expected to join us later on this evening, hopefully during this Committee of the Whole Meeting. There are no items on the regular agenda that are on this agenda, so I'd like to move on, given the fact that there is no public participation indicated, and move on to the one item on our agenda, the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan. And I'm going to get this started with our Community Development Director, Joelle Charlton, who will introduce a few other guests tonight. Joelle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and members of the community. We are very pleased to present the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan to the council and everyone here tonight. The completion of this plan is a little over a year in the making and comes with input from, obtained from multiple meetings that involve various community members, students, and through extensive listening and visioning, utilizing a 30-member task force that was appointed by the mayor last year. As some of you may recall, late last year, this plan itself gained its support on the heels of prior studies that had showed how much the area was changing and what we needed to do, and the impacts of those changes were having on the community as a whole. Provided for you tonight is going to be a tag-team effort. I'm going to start with some of the public engagement that was utilized to develop the plan and get us to where we are today. We're also going to hear from our consultant, Adam Rosa, from Camaros, who guided us through this process and provided us with a wealth of information from their experience in working on similar projects in other communities and other parts of the country. He'll also go through a summary of key findings and recommendations that were reached by the task force. Our Economic Development Planner, Jason Mishnek, will talk a little bit about the impact the plan is already having throughout the community. We implemented some early action projects and have already been able to utilize the plan in applying for certain grants, and he'll talk about those a little bit. Finally, we'll hear from Herb Rubin, our Task Force Chair, and perhaps a couple of other people from our committee task force who are here tonight. We'll give them an opportunity to speak if they'd like to add some comments. Our goal tonight is to give everyone a last overview of this document. As I said, we've been working on this for a little over a year, and our intent is to have the council consider this at their next meeting, so your second meeting in November, to approve an ordinance that would be an update to the city's adopted 2005 comprehensive plan. As an adoption to the comprehensive plan, that becomes a policy guideline for us that we can utilize when we want to implement change in the area. And again, it's another one of those tools that's very important when we're talking about applying for grants or supporting our other government partners or other investors in the area who are looking to make changes. So how do we get to that final plan? It involved this planning process, it's a pretty good slide that shows what that process looked like. It involved a lot of listening, visioning, the formulation of strategies from our consultants, all went into putting the plan together. And that process started, and I obviously can't read all the names on that, but that's the list of 30 people that were appointed to the task force by the mayor and council late last year. The important part of that task force is that it contains a very broad cross-section of people representing various backgrounds. So that task force includes property owners, business owners, NIU students, people from the faith-based community. We have government partners from the county, the park district, and the school district. Some of our social service providers were also involved in that group. So it became a very important part of the process to have all of these people get together and provide us with that visioning and guidance. The community feedback was achieved over a year-long period that began last fall in 2017 with several community meetings. Again, we tried to advertise, get flyers out to people that lived within the community to attend these various meetings that were held in different locations, again, with the effort to try and achieve as much public input as possible. Early in the process, the group also focused on what were called key person interviews. So in addition to all these big group meetings and having various people on the task force, several people in the community were identified and asked to come in and speak specifically to our consulting team about their experience and knowledge in the area so that we could get some vision statements together. Before I turn it over to Adam to go through a little bit of the findings of the report, I do want to note that a big part of this community engagement process did involve participation from our partners at NIU Center for Governmental Studies. They were an instrumental part in helping us take minutes from all of these various meetings. As Adam will explain, the group broke down into four subcommittees, so it was an important part to have them be our partner because without them, we would have had to spend a lot more money paying the consultants to come in and keep those notes for us. So special thanks goes out to NIU and the Center for Governmental Studies for helping us do that work. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Adam and ask him to go through some of the key points of the revitalization plan.
Thank you, Joelle, Mayor, members of the committee. My name is Adam Rosa. I'm a principal with Camaros, and we were really tasked with facilitating this plan process, engaging the community, working with the stakeholders, including the task force, to bring it all together into a document that can really be a roadmap for the future of the Antiglen North area. So the area that we were looking at as part of this plan includes about 522 acres, which is about 5.5 percent of the city of DeKalb. But within this area, there are about 9,500 people, which is, I believe, 23 percent of the population of the city. So very dense neighborhood in relation to the overall city of DeKalb. We believe that it's very important that improvements in this area have a catalytic effect that can be positively felt throughout the entire city. So to keep it very simple, the goal of the plan is to turn the neighborhood from surviving into thriving. And we do this by laying out a number of different initiatives and projects that are organized around key topic areas. We've created a vision for the neighborhood that's based on what the residents in the community want to see to move this area towards thriving. And the purpose of the plan is to create a framework and a tool for decision-making so that when projects come before the city council and the planning commission, you have a document that can be a guide towards the overall vision of the neighborhood. It's also intended to really represent the different interests in the Antiglen North area, from the students, to the landlords, to the different service providers, to the homeowners that live and work in Antiglen North. So at the onset of the project, we thought it was very important to organize this process around a very strong task force, as Joelle mentioned, that was made up of a variety of different folks from the city and from the neighborhood that represented different interests. This task force was appointed by the mayor, and it included everyone from experts on transportation, to health, to some of the landlords that own a lot of property within the neighborhood, to residents of NIU, to residents of University Village. So we wanted to make sure that it was well-representative. The task force was then, and it's a little hard for me to read this slide here, but it was divided into four different categories. And each of the groups within the task force were set up as focus groups or working groups to help really tackle specific issues and assets of the neighborhood. And let me just get it here. So the first working group was organized around transportation, infrastructure, and open space. And some of the core goals of that group were to make the Antiglen North neighborhood a desirable area for the entire community to visit or live by providing quality living standards, adding useful park and recreation space, and creating interconnectivity between the neighborhood and the rest of the city. So that's transportation, infrastructure, and open space. The second group that was created as part of the task force was community services. And the goal of that group was to ensure that Antiglen North residents have access to employment opportunities and resources. One of the goals of the plan was to go beyond the bricks and mortar of where should new development go and what public investment should happen where, but to really get to the core of improving the quality of life for local residents through improved services and other community assets. So the third working group was organized around neighborhood safety and security. And as we began the process about a year ago, I was at a meeting just like this, and one of the reasons that folks justified for creating this plan was because there were many issues related to safety and security in the Antiglen North area. So we wanted to make sure that we had a focus group that was dedicated to that topic, but that topic itself would be integrated into these other parts of the overall plan because we know that safety and security is really interconnected with economic development, jobs, and education, and transportation. But it was important to focus projects on that specific category. And then the third was around housing and commercial development. We wanted to create a plan that looked not only at where new retail, commercial, and services could go along the Antiglen North corridor, but also where new housing, what types of housing should be appropriate for the future, the vision of this neighborhood. So overall, the plan includes 45 different projects, and I'm not going to go through all 45 projects here. We've identified 10 that we really consider catalytic transformational projects that I'm going to talk a little bit about. But if you look at the overall 45 projects, we had about 16 projects that were focused on transportation, infrastructure, and open space, about 11 projects dedicated to community services, about seven projects for neighborhood safety and security, and 11 projects for housing and commercial development. And as I said, a lot of these are interconnected, but for each project, we have a description of the project. We talk about a potential cost estimate for implementing the project, level of complexity for the project, and key partners that could really be, help to lead this effort. The idea is not to have the city of DeKalb take the entire plan and implement it themselves. This was always about bringing partners together through the task force to create projects that could be carried out by a variety of different interests and agencies. So as I mentioned, we have identified 10 core transformational projects for the planning effort. And these were really, they rose to the top based on the task force input and the small working groups. And we feel that these 10 catalytic projects have the potential to really stimulate positive change in the neighborhood. Some are physical improvements that should be carried out by the city. Others are redevelopment areas, focus areas that really should be focused on by the private development community, and others are services that will help to improve the quality of life of residents. So I'm going to go through the 10 projects. They're not really in any specific order, but they, all 10 of them, as I said, rose to the top of the 45 overall projects that are in the plan. Some of these projects have momentum behind them, they're already underway. Others could be started in the next few years. But we feel that as a roadmap, these 10 projects can really help the city council and the planning commission in really directing resources in the future, the next few years, towards the Antiglen North area. So the first project is related to establishing a community food and education center somewhere in the neighborhood. This project hits a lot, really checks a lot of boxes. There is issues and challenges for residents related to being close to grocery stores. We know that there's a need for economic development. We know that there's a need for job training. There's a need for promoting healthier lifestyles through nutrition. So this project, if developed in the Antiglen North area, would have the ability to really move many of these different things forward. So we strongly recommend the establishment of a food and education center that would not only include a commercial or retail grocery element, but could also include a farm-to-table restaurant and training programs for local residents to really connect into the agricultural, the agricultural systems of the DeKalb area. And this could be a very unique project that could be highly appealing to both the student population and families in the area in really promoting new food and economic development. An example of a project of this type was implemented a couple of years ago in Gary, Indiana, and it's called Art House Social Kitchen. And in Gary, they had the issue of, they had many issues, but one was related to the lack of healthy food in the central part of Gary. I think there are only 30 restaurants in the entire city, and probably 28 of them are fast food. So they came up with an initiative that was focused on a community kitchen, a training center, and combined it with arts and cultural community space. So this is a good case study that we've included in the plan to really represent the type of project that, type of catalytic effect that the kitchen, or the healthy food project could really bring forward. So as I mentioned, each project in the plan has a page that looks something like this with a full description, steps for how to achieve the project, cost estimates, and partners that should really be integrated into moving the project forward. The second project of the catalytic projects is all about developing a model for implementation of the plan. And we recommend that the city and the community consider the creation of a community development corporation, or CDC, or other entity of that type, to help focus implementation and revitalization efforts in the Antiglen North area. We know that city staff has a lot on their plate. We know that there are many resources available within the community. And community development corporations are nonprofits that have been able, throughout the state of Illinois, to implement projects relating to affordable housing, economic development, job training, creating community gardens and farms. So we think that this is a really good model to pursue for organizing these 45 projects that are in the plan and helping to really shepherd these forward. So we've laid out in the plan document, specific steps for organizing and moving forward on a community development corporation. A university community that's had a lot of success with this model is in Dayton, Ohio, around the University of Dayton. They developed a CDC, I think it was back in the late 1970s, and since then, they've seen, I think, from $14 million to $20 million of reinvestment around the campus area. And they've taken areas like this with housing that was dilapidated and rundown, and through the CDC, they've been able to develop mixed-income housing and housing that was a mixture of students and families within the campus area. They've also been able to really help to revitalize some of the commercial districts in and around the University of Dayton through this model, CDC. So I encourage you to take a look at the case study and the plan as well. These are just some statistics on what they've been able to achieve through this program. So the next project is a safety project, safety and security, and it's really focused on implementing safety improvements related to lighting and surveillance. And the lighting issue was something that was brought up early and often in the process. Residents felt that it was too dark to walk in the neighborhood, and that contributed to the lack of safety. Jason's going to tell you a little bit more about an early action that came out of the plan, it came out of that challenge. But the surveillance part of this is really two different elements. One would be actually establishing public surveillance cameras in specific areas of the Antiglen North area and being able to really connect those in with the police department and other security measures. The second part of that is ensuring that local property owners and apartment owners connect their existing cameras into a network that can be accessed by law enforcement. So it's really a two-phased approach. So we've laid out a recommendation in the plan, talking about security cameras, and some of the key steps and the elements that should be taken into consideration when implementing a program like this. We also have a case study from Humboldt Park in Chicago, where in, I believe it was 2003, they implemented a camera program similar to this and saw a pretty significant reduction in crime in the neighborhood through this initiative. So it's a good model to look at for potentially integrating into Antiglen North. The next project really focuses on the residents' needs and desires to connect into the larger region, making sure that residents of University Village and other areas within Antiglen North can easily access jobs, resources, services without a car. So this project really focuses on the identification of transportation improvements and integrating them into the DSAT study that is currently underway to make sure that residents can connect into the resources of the surrounding area. And we had a pretty good conversation at our fourth community meeting about where new bus stops should go, and when routes were being changed, and how that was affecting the lifestyles of local residents. And so we want to make sure that the recommendations that we have in the plan are integrated into this larger transit study because it is such an important feature for residents of the neighborhood. The next is to create a community center program. There's really a lack of community spaces within Antiglen North, both for students and for families. And we have an opportunity here to bring partners together, as they were brought together through the task force, to develop really a range of programs that could help residents, but also to create a, identify a location for these programs to occur. We know that the University Village Community Room is one location that's being utilized for, to bring services to residents. But we think that there's also an opportunity to utilize the city-owned property on Edgebrook to potentially create a new community center. And that center could really be utilized in a variety of ways, from workforce development to job training, to education, to things like daycare for local residents. So we have a couple illustrations in the plan that show how that 912 Edgebrook, 912? 911? 912. 912 Edgebrook project could really be envisioned as a new community center that would also include some public space and potentially some shared parking. We know that there's a kind of a parking crunch in the neighborhood, so by utilizing shared parking lots, we could potentially have parking that could be available for community uses, as well as students and families in off-hours on that particular site. There's also a case study in the plan of a similar project in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. It's called the Fowler Center. And they took an old building and they rehabbed it into a very robust community center that provides job training, education, arts and cultural programming. But the beauty of this project is not just the effect that it's had on the residents of the surrounding area, but the fact that it was catalytic in stimulating reinvestment in the surrounding blocks around this particular site. So we think that the 912 Edgebrook project could have that same catalytic effect in really encouraging property owners to improve the properties around it, bringing residents into the neighborhood to utilize the services, and potentially being a kind of an anchor for reinvestment in the Antiglen North neighborhood. One of the things that could happen at that center, could happen in another location, is the idea of working with local healthcare providers to establish a walk-in clinic, a medical clinic, or an urgent care facility within the neighborhood. Something that was convenient to residents, that could be walkable, and something that could get up and running fairly quickly. And one of the recommendations that we had would be potentially for the city to dedicate a small amount of startup funding to an operator that was willing to open a clinic like this within the boundaries of the plan, something that was federally qualified clinic, and something that could be open within the next couple of years. So we want the plan to lead to action, and if we can help to seed that project and move it forward, I think that would really help to satisfy a lot of the challenges that are in the neighborhood related to health, and making sure that there's somewhere to go when people get sick. The next project is focused more on commercial and residential redevelopment, and we think that there should be a focus area on the Hillcrest Blackhawk site, which is really the area of the old campus cinemas right at the edge of Greek Row. This is a shopping center that's seen its better days, but it sits really at the heart of the neighborhood, and it could be re-envisioned and re-imagined as a mixed-use place, a place where students want to go, a place where residents want to go, and this could be developed through a public-private partnership. So we recommend really focusing redevelopment efforts on this site. We've included a kind of a visualization of what this could look like and what this could feel like, and how it could tie into the larger improvements recommended in Greek Row. The next is a streetscape and gateway improvement area for Greek Row itself to really improve the perception of that portion of the neighborhood and to also improve walkability and the attractiveness of Greek Row as a portion of the city of DeKalb. We feel that Greek Row has a strong influence in Antiglen North, but that influence isn't really felt through the built environment, and that this project could really help to signify the importance of Greek Row within the larger community. The next project is to create also a commercial and residential redevelopment effort, and this is focusing on the Lucinda area just north of campus. We think that there's a significant potential to redevelop aging properties that are directly north of Lucinda Avenue into, again, walkable, mixed-use development that could be integrated into natural features, like the creek that crosses Lucinda, goes into campus, and actually heads up into the neighborhood. So thinking about three- and four-story development, retail on the ground floor, apartments above, other services intertwined, to put the focus on a potential public-private partnership with NIU to develop some of these key sites could be a tremendous benefit for the Antiglen North area, but also to NIU, as this is really their front door, their front yard. We think that this is where investment should go, and in doing so, it really create a catalytic effect for the rest of the Antiglen North area. An example of that is in South Bend in Notre Dame. We created a plan in 2008, similar type of reinvestment, redevelopment master plan. This is an area just north of, or actually just south of the Notre Dame campus in South Bend. And when we began the process in 2008, it looked like this. There wasn't much there. There was really a desire to create that kind of walkable campus-town feel. And by 2017, they had taken the plan, utilized a variety of different tools, developed public-private partnerships to create what is here today, which is a really an integrated and robust mixed-use redevelopment, includes a hotel, a variety of restaurants. mixed-use redevelopment, includes a hotel, a variety of restaurants, townhomes for faculty and staff, as well as apartments for students, and it's really helped to create a place in the area just south of campus. So this is also a case study we've included in the plan and a good model looking forward for creating development tied specifically to the university. The next project comes out of the Parks and Open Space Group, and that is really taking Welsh Park and really polishing it as a gem. It's the largest neighborhood park in Antiglen North. It has a significant potential. At this point, it's rather underutilized, so we have recommendations in the park for reinvestment, public investment. We know that the Parks Department has some funding available for specific improvements to the park itself, but we think that by including it in the plan and talking about the things that we would like to see at Welsh Park, we could utilize this to go after additional grant funding to really make Welsh Park the centerpiece, the open space, the center park of the Antiglen North area. Doing things like improving the walkways and sidewalks and the landscaping, including activities that would appeal to a wide variety of users. Right now, there's a few things that appeal to very young kids, there's a few things that appeal to teenagers, there's not really much for students, and there's not really much for seniors at Welsh Park. So by taking this resource and improving it, we think we can not only have a positive effect in the neighborhood, but also a catalytic effect on the properties immediately surrounding Welsh Park. So we've included a kind of a list of different desired amenities based on our community engagement, one of which that came up from the task force was the idea of a splash pad that would be a water feature, that would really be something that the entire city of DeKalb could utilize, but it would also create a really nice amenity for local families. So we feel pretty strongly about the recommendation of really trying to invest and improve Welsh Park as a centerpiece of this plan. So those are the 10, really the 10 transformational projects that we have outlined. All of them go into more detail, but we think that the implementation of the plan will really be focused on a variety of key factors. The city of DeKalb really leading the effort and providing guidance going forward. Local residents having a strong stake in the community. We have a description about how to improve or create a neighborhood association for Antiglen North, something that doesn't exist today. Also connecting the tenant, the various tenant associations of the larger apartment complexes within the neighborhood will help to provide leadership in the community that is really going to be necessary to move this forward. I mentioned the Community Development Corporation or other organization of that type to help shepherd these efforts and to have really a single focus point for all of the projects that are in the plan, to be able to track the success, and to bring in partners to be able to access resources through local banks to move projects forward. The financial sector is another part of making this plan a success and making sure that they can dedicate resources to Antiglen North. The local partner agencies, many of who were represented on the task force, will be responsible for many of the projects and plans that are outlined in this project, but we do need somebody to really make sure that they stay connected, to bring them together and to figure out if there are specific gaps in the services that they're providing to the neighborhood. The landowners of the area, we want them to see the potential that this plan outlines and the vision that the community wants to see, so that when they're looking at some of their aging properties, does it make sense to redevelop it at a different scale, a different density, trying to create something that ties into the larger structure of the vision for the community? And then last but not least, potential developers, both those that are currently working here in the city and those from the outside area that may be interested in potentially working here in the future. We want this plan to be a guide and a way to promote potential redevelopment, so that when someone comes in, we can say, "The community's already created a vision, they know what they want to see, here's an example, now can you help us bring that project forward?" So again, many different entities coming together to implement the plan. Okay, so now I'm going to pass it over to Jason. He's going to talk a little bit about some of the successes that we've had over the past year as we've been kind of processing through the plan.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the projects and early implementation projects that we took on throughout the planning process, and then also talk about the plan and how that's an asset in and of itself. The first one here is tree trimming that our Public Works Department started at the end of last year after we approved the contract with Camero's and assigned the task force and started working. ComEd, we recently announced, has completed the changeover of 800 lights throughout the community to LED lights, and the combination of the tree trimming and LED lighting, as well as the Safe Streets Initiative that our PDs rolled out in the Antiglen North, has already had an impact. The graph here was put together by a police department showing a reduction in crime. These are different types and categories of crime, and this is over homecoming weekend, going back for the last couple of years, and those white bars are this year. So you can see, we saw a reduction in every category during homecoming weekend in crime here in DeKalb. The plan, as well as being just a policy and a framework and a vision for us as we look at neighborhood revitalization, is actually an asset in and of itself. When we're applying for grants and looking for funding sources, we can point to the plan and say, "We've taken the initiative and we've gathered the community together to develop this vision. This is something that the community as a whole has agreed upon." Recently, we got an opportunity through Representative Keiker's office to apply for $100,000 grant through DCEO, and because we had those 10 transformational projects that were identified in the plan, we were able to point to the Neighborhood Education and Food Center as a project that we wanted to apply that grant towards. So we put together with the help of Dan Kenny, who's leading the initiative on that project, put together a grant application for DCEO, and sent that off to Representative Keiker's office, which we hope will get confirmed that that $100,000 will be able to go towards the construction of that center sometime hopefully next year. In addition to just this grant, along the planning process, the process in itself was instrumental, I believe, in us getting opportunities on designation. When we found out through DCEO and the state after the program was introduced, we identified all of the census tracts that were qualifying, which there was a total of six here in DeKalb, and looking at the Antiglen area, we were able to identify and say, "We're doing this planning initiative in this neighborhood, all of these census tracts qualify. We want to prioritize our census tracts, and the AGN area is our top priority right now," and we were able to point to the plan, and I do believe that that was instrumental in us getting designation for the area. Another update is in regards to the transit consolidation between Husky Lines and VAC that is already underway, and that is going to be a huge benefit to residents. When we were having conversations in our subcommittees in Transportation Group and the Community Services Group, we identified that transportation and transit was one of the biggest issues for residents that don't have cars. How do they get to grocery stores? How do they get to employment? They're kind of, even though it's a very dense neighborhood, they're isolated and somewhat on an island if they can't get out of the neighborhood, and they can't make that economic gain if they can't find gainful employment because they don't have a car. Another update, now that we have a transit manager, Marcus Cox, we started conversations with our largest employers, and Park 88 this afternoon, we made a proposal to them about creating a fixed route that would connect the Antiglen neighborhood, as well as other parts of the city, down to the employers. Currently, the transit fixed routes do not go to Park 88. We recognized through the conversations and the planning process that that was something that we were missing. We weren't connecting the residents that were unemployed and looking for jobs to employers that were in need of employees. We're hopefully going to be able to roll out that sometime next year. We don't have a firm date yet. There's still some things to iron out, but it sounds like there's going to be support for that moving forward. Another thing that we're looking at is the general infrastructure and the use of CDBG funds to fund the infrastructure that could be used for improved lighting and also the security camera initiative that was called out in the plan. One of the things that we would need in order to install public security cameras would be the fiber network, and staff's currently looking at what we have available and what would need to be approved through HUD in order to use some of the funds that are available to put a possible fiber ring into the AGN area. We're also looking at off-grid technologies for improved lighting around Welsh Park and Russell Road. That's one of the darkest sections in that neighborhood, and we found a vendor that does off-grid solar-powered lighting, and we have cost estimates, so that's something that we're also looking at potential grants and funding sources that we'd be able to install to improve safety conditions around Welsh Park and other areas of the neighborhood. So thinking about next steps, the purpose of tonight was to really go into detail about the plan. We'll be coming back at our next council meeting for the first reading of approving the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan. It is considered a sub-area plan, so it would be an amendment to our comprehensive plan, so it would have to be adopted via ordinance, so we will be bringing that back to our next council meeting, and that'll give the public another chance to comment. So any comments that we get from you this evening, we'll be able to incorporate and make any final changes to the document before bringing that back on the 26th. And this time, I want to turn it over to our AGN Task Force Chair, Herb Rubin.
I'm going to sound a little awkward. I had a long presentation prepared, and I've been editing it down to reduce redundancy. So this is turning more into almost a personal reflection on what was a wonderful process. On a personal level, I've been on all the task force since Greg Sparrow was mayor, and this has been by far the most satisfying effort. People worked together, staff was very, very helpful, the consultant was wonderful, and it was a very, very positive effort. When it started, I was a little cynical, but it's really worked out well. I'd like to thank the council, and especially the two council members who participated in the task force who more or less observed it, you know, for their continual support and help during the whole process. I'd also like to comment on how the actual plan really brought together people. The task force members were a wide variety of individuals, differing careers, organizational affiliations, and not insignificantly in political and social perspectives, who even with all these differences, we reached basically total consensus. That was very, very satisfactory. Our members during the task force were concerned about the problems in the area and concerned about how the problems impacted the broader community. Secondly, everybody on the task force, many experienced and many city committees, were insistent that this plan not end up like other plans, you know, causing allergy attacks by sitting on a shelf and collecting dust, but actually move to an implementation stage, and it's already been started in that way. That was very, very, very satisfying. While the consultant was incredibly helpful, bringing in examples and other things, it's very important to realize this plan emerged organically from both community members and more strongly from the members of the task force, who worked out individual projects but also were working out the projects had two thoughts in mind. One, do the projects complement each other, to safety, encourage economic development, and vice versa, and the answer is clearly yes. And then secondly, how important the projects were, not simply to the neighborhood, but to the entire city, improving its image, better integrating the neighborhood into the city, and vice versa. And the plan itself is not simply to benefit the Antiglen North area, though that will be the principal beneficiary, it's to benefit the entire town, an improved image. It's about making sure for those throughout DeKalb and hopefully other places are inspired to visit the Antiglen North neighborhood while those in the Antiglen North neighborhood know they're a welcome part of the Cal. Again, the consultant made very clear, the plan contains a set of carefully considered visions rather than being a step-by-step work plan. The projects that will be undertaken depend on funding, enthusiasm, changing political environment, what HUD is willing to do, but the plan itself gives an overall direction to say, "Okay, are we heading in the right direction or no?" As Jason has indicated, I have a long section here that I've edited out, never be the last speaker in a group, okay? Actions have already begun, and some have already shown some success. I'd like to conclude with what actions I think are needed now, basically by the council. The success of the effort requires continuing, ongoing support from city staff and the council. The city needs to be a catalyst for establishing an implementation agency, and until that is done, I don't know how the city's going to find it with the budget situation, but it really needs continual staff support until such an agency can be set up. Spoled staff and elected officials should reach out to other governmental agencies, neighborhood groups, foundations, banks, the hospital, the Chamber of Commerce, the Park District, the university, the DSATs group, and of course, the private sector, to bring about coordinated efforts to repair the AGN area. As part of this outreach effort, the city should seek out participation from significant actors within the AGN area, and this might require work, as has already been mentioned, to encourage the development of community and neighborhood organizations within the AGN area. Given both the complexity of what is being proposed, the long timeframe that's necessarily involved in, it's taken two generations to create the problems, it's not going to be solved by tomorrow, okay, and the multiple of the public, nonprofit, and private entities involved, it is vital to have an agency in place whose single purpose is to catalyze, guide, and coordinate the redevelopment effort. As the city has many other tasks to perform, and our president is facing budgetary constraints, the agency should be legally separate from the city. The agency should have its own 501(c)(3) status to facilitate grant applications. The supervising board, and this is how we integrate the agency into the city more generally, the supervising board as such an agency must reflect the diverse individuals and organizations involved in the redevelopment effort, ranging from community members to funders, including banks, social service organizations, private entities, along with concerned clergy, and of course, both the city and the university. Working to set up such an agency is one of the core catalytic recommendations of the task force. I'm making the optimistic, and I hope realistic, assumption that the council will incorporate the task force recommendations as part of the city's comprehensive plan. I recommend that immediately afterwards, the mayor and council work with knowledgeable individuals and potential funders to set up such an implementing agency. Doing so, and doing so quickly, is vital to maintain the momentum already established. How's that for an academic being brief?
Excellent, Herb. Thank you very much. I want to thank Herb, and Adam, and Jason, and Joellen. Before we turn it over to council for any questions and comments, and I would hope that maybe Alderman Jacobson and Alderman Fanucan, who have been our two council liaisons, may want to make a comment. I have one speaker request for them. Dwayne, was this yours? Yeah, okay. I couldn't read your agenda item description, so, but I thought, I figured that must have been it. D1, thank you.
Dwayne Brown. I want to thank the DeKalb County Community Gardens Association and the Antiglen North Task Force for some great ideas that have been proposed. Such a community, such as a community food and education center that would perform several functions, a small grocery store, which is exactly what this food desert needs, a food pantry, outdoor market, commercial shared-use incubator kitchen, and food hub, and a small urban farm with a greenhouse. A redesign of Welsh Park, more trees, lighting, hockey rink, and lighting, among other suggestions. This would be great. I know that this is broad brushstrokes, and the final painting requires a lot of detailing, but I certainly like how the painting is looking right now, and I hope that these are implemented and it becomes a real success. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. The goal tonight is to take no action other than to get some consensus from city council that we do want to draft, direct staff to direct an ordinance adopting this amendment, or this document, the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan, as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Having said that, I'd like to see if... Having said that, I'd like to see if Alderman Jacobson or Alderman Fanouken, either or both, would like to make a few comments regarding your participation in the AGN revitalization plan.
I think preliminarily, when we started this thing, there was some pushback in having such an engaged community task force. And I know in the genesis of those discussions, there was some worry that they wouldn't take this seriously enough and push the ball forward enough, quick enough, to get this process done in time, to get a plan together. I think the community members that did step on the task force were outstanding. I mean, they put in the time, they put in the energy, they did their subcommittee meetings, they brought a broad perspective, certainly more so than I've seen in many of our different committees and other things, that they could bring to the table, again, from all different points of the spectrum in terms of stakeholders. Obviously, the biggest concern now is going to be funding, and I think that's something long-term the council is going to have to wrestle with. One of the biggest things that I think came out of some of these discussions that struck me is how much of the population is in this very small piece of our town, and it's, again, a good 25%, 30% of our population of the entire city is directly affected by what goes on in this neighborhood as neighborhood residents. So I think it's certainly long past due. I think it's an important effort that we have to make sure doesn't get shelved like so many plans have been before, and I'm excited to see how we push this ball forward and look for the funding through some grants and some other opportunities to see some of these projects get off the ground.
Thank you, David. Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, echo Dave's comment on the work ethic of the task force. It really was very heartwarming to see, and they really did put a lot of effort into it. But I also want to compliment the members of the community who came out to our community meetings, not just prior, but after the plan was published and made comments on it and voiced some other concerns that, again, we've already started to take some actions on. And one of the items I'll just mention real quickly was the bus service out to the county health department. So that's an item now that DSATs and our transportation people are looking at and trying to improve that. So it's just those comments that continue to be received, and we welcome more comments as we go along with this because we want the public to be very involved as we continue this process. This is not a conclusion. This the end of step one.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, as the meeting draws to a conclusion, are there any other council comments prior to my turning it over to Jason to wrap it up? Alderman Norrego.
I appreciate the efforts of, you know, the committee members and staff. It's a wonderful document. My only concern is the implementation phase, and I agree with Herb, and he'll be pleased that we are agreeing that we need to capitalize on, you know, the energy and the enthusiasm. Having said that, I'm still unclear what a CDC is. Can you give me kind of a capsule description? And where does the funding for something like that come from?
I guess at the broadest, highest level, a CDC is generally thought of as a 501(c)(3) organization or a nonprofit that is able to engage in neighborhood revitalization and development themselves. There's a lot of different structures of CDCs that you could look at as models. I think the reason that the task force recommendation was not the creation, but consideration, they need to look at all the different structures. The city needs to evaluate all the different structures of CDCs. The one thing that I would say is the successful CDC models that you do see around the country are always a grassroots effort. It's something that has to come from within the neighborhood, giving the voice to the residents in that neighborhood and not taking a top-down approach where you have leadership. The city can't create the structure of a CDC if it is to succeed.
Okay. And about, I mean, how much time does it take to implement one of these?
That, I'm not sure. It all depends, again, if it's coming from within the neighborhood and the residents are the ones that are controlling it. It could take a considerable amount of time to put together a team of leaders from within the neighborhood and then develop. I think once you have the people in place and organizational structure identified, it's a matter of filing paperwork. You had asked about funding. There's a lot of different funding models out there. Some CDCs will actually raise funds and engage in development themselves and engage in projects. Some of them will act more kind of as a microfinancer or lender, where they'll create revolving loan funds for other organizations and groups in neighborhoods to implement projects. So there's a lot of work that we need to do to research, investigate, and again, working with the residents in the neighborhood.
And I would think too, Kate, that that is not the genesis of the momentum continuing. There are projects now that are in formation, that are in process, and we need to continue those. The EDC, excuse me, the CDC will, I think, enable us then to wrap our hands around it, especially as it relates to funding and organizational acumen moving forward. So the question is a good one. Jason, you want to wrap this up so we can get on to council?
Yeah, before I conclude, I know that we have other task force members in the audience. I just, I know Dan and Chad and Professor Thermaier, I wanted to invite them to come say anything if they would like.
I know the time is short, but I just want to say first, thank you, Mary Smith, for the privilege of serving on this task force. I've served on a lot of task forces as well, and this was enjoyable, challenging. It's very difficult, complex issues that we have here. But I think what I enjoyed most about this is that we moved from focusing on this neighborhood to shifting our thinking about this as the city. And when we consider the fact that we're talking about a quarter of our population, it's one dimension, but I think what we also have to do is really emphasize that this is about, this is a city of DeKalb issue. It's not an AGN issue. This is not about that neighborhood. This is about how is DeKalb going to flourish in the next 10 to 20 years? And so there are so many possibilities. Dan's project is an exciting one, but we have all of this vacant land around the high school, and if we want to see people building houses there, we need to make this neighborhood a destination for everybody. This is not just about helping people that live there now get someplace else in DeKalb. It is about how are we going to make this place a destination for people all over the city, all over the county, in fact, right? So they come in. So if we get things like the food project, if we get other kinds of stores, if we get other kinds of activities going on there, it's a place where people want to be. And it's also tied to the future of the university. The university's future depends on being able to attract people, and we need to find a way to make that area attractive to all the people considering Northern Illinois University. My last thought is, you know, when we, I was just visiting in-laws in Wisconsin, and we drove into Prairie du Chine. It's a town of about 7,000 people along the Mississippi River. And I was stunned to think about this. In the last 12 years that I have been at NIU, we have lost the population equivalent of the entire city of Prairie du Chine, Wisconsin, from the city of DeKalb. That is a staggering idea. So when people think NIU lost 7,000, DeKalb, Illinois, lost that many people. So we have an opportunity to use this plan as a spark plug, as a way to engage the public sector, the private sector, the university, and the city, and the state, and the county, and to put together a way to revitalize not just AGN, but the entire city of DeKalb. And I would love to have you keep that in mind. This is about revitalizing DeKalb. It is not just about revitalizing AGN. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Thermaier, Kurt Thermaier there. Any other representatives, Jason, from the task force who would like to speak? No? Okay.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening and thank the task force for all the hard work. There was a lot of hours that were put into the formulation of this plan. And as Alderman Fanouken said, this is just the beginning. The hard work is ahead of us. So we'll be back at our next council meeting with the ordinances to approve and adopt this as an amendment to our comprehensive plan.
Very good. Thank you very much. We look forward to that as a city council. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the committee of the whole. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Markort, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. City council will start promptly at 6:05, 6:05.